As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
Call this regular meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mr. Porter. If you would call the roll, please.
Starting on the far right, Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
That's the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhow represents the Jamestown District.
Here.
Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District.
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Palpatan District.
Here.
And Ms. Larson.
Here.
Berkeley District and Chair of the Board. All members present.
Thank you. We are going to do our moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's pledge will be led by James City County's newest Eagle Scouts. In attendance tonight are Daniel Giesman, Logan Winger, Samuel Baird, Jordan Turner, Leon Wilson, Michael Rodriguez, Matthew Andrews, and Nathan Denny. And if I mispronounced any of your names, let me know so I can do that right. Gentlemen, if you will please come forward and lead us in a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, we choose the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will be making a presentation to those Eagle Scouts in just a little bit. With that, it brings us to public comment. Our first speaker tonight is Peg Borman.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Ms. Larson, members of the Board, Mr. Porter, Mr. Kinsman. I'm Peg Borman. I live at 17 Settlers Lane, and I'm here again to talk to you a little bit about trash, as usual. I'm the trash lady. Clean County is not going to let up on you. We're going to keep on keeping at you until we can get James City County clean and keep it clean. We also want to stress tonight that you consider voting for our zero tolerance for litter that's on your consent calendar. And we think that that's an opportunity for us to, as volunteers, to be a little more efficient in our job as volunteers. And also, it gives us a better opportunity to collaborate with the different departments in the county and the police department. So please consider passing it for us this evening. Thank you. Just a reminder, for those out there that haven't heard about Will Barnes Day, that's this coming Thursday, which is June the 14th. He was one of our volunteers for many years here, and that's his birthday. It's also Flag Day, so we want to honor him, and we're doing it at the Veterans Park on Ironbound Road. And some of you I haven't heard from, some of you I have heard from, and I'm happy to know that some of you will be there. And sorry that some of you can't be there. We're going to recognize the Adopt a Spot participants at this picnic. And we feel like that if we continue to recognize our volunteers across the county, we'll have more volunteers to help us keep it clean. We're also having a meeting on July the 13th at Freedom Park for Keep James City County Beautiful quarterly meeting. That will be at 12:00, and everyone is invited to come to that. We're usually there about an hour, and it's an opportunity for anyone in the county who would like to come and see what we're doing, what we're trying to do. And if you can give us an hour of participation or more, we're happy to have you. Also, July the 14th, we're going to be doing an event at Jamestown Beach, kind of a seminar cleanup information gathering, and see what we can do to take care of that. And that will be from 10:00 to 1:00. So we thank you for letting me have this time to talk, and I'm not going to talk as long as you might think I'm going to. So have a good meeting, and we thank you for what you do for the county.
Thank you. Kimberly Hunley?
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Hunley. I reside at 108 Mattapanay Trail, but I'm here tonight as the President of the Teachers' Education Association for Williamsburg. And I came to the last meeting, but it was a closed session. Hopefully you got your Fiji water that day, because I know I gave them to Ms. Larson. The reason for the water was I like to refer to myself as a BOS child myself. I'm a Board of Supervisors child. My dad was the first African American on the Board of Supervisors in Fluvana County in 1980, and he served for 16 years before he passed away with cancer. And then my mother was the first African American and woman to serve on Fluvana. This is her second term. But my dad always was important in getting water into Fluvana County, and he always wanted the best. So that's why I saw what y'all were drinking, and I was like, I'm going to give them a step up with the water that day. So I brought you Fiji water because I know that you want the best. And just, I know a lot of teachers reached out to you, and I know a lot of them sent me your emails in response to the budget, and I'm very happy that you all supported us. And if you've been watching the school board meetings, I'm always giving gifts, so I do have gifts for you tonight. But I gave you a couple grand back in chocolates and a "no more" button, which we were given at our VEA convention because you all also supported the SROs in the schools and just upping security. And so this button just kind of says no more, like there's no more school violence, and that's something we stand in support of. So it's just my way of saying thank you. I know how hard you work. I remember going home, stepping over maps in the house and calls about chickens and trash and water, and so you work very hard, and I just wanted to show how much the teachers, that we appreciate all that you do. And so I'm going to leave this with them.
Thank you.
And I have a church meeting, so I can't stay, or I would. I like board meetings, but the ladies are coming to my house at 6:30, so I will see you all another time. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other cards this time? All right. With that, I'm going to do the Eagle Scout recognition. I'm going to go down. Any member of the Board is welcome to come with me if you want to go, whatever you all would like to do. I'm going down. There you go. Appreciate that. Let me also recognize the adults that are in the room with the scouts. George Reesbeck, who is First Colony District Advancement Chair. Bob Winger, Scout Master Troop 180. Bernard Payne, Scout Master Troop 195. Don Reeve, Scout Master Troop 103. I want to thank Scout Master Heath Richardson for helping me with that. But I do appreciate, if I missed another adult, I apologize. But it's so important for these young people that they have adults, and I know scouting is such a big part of a child's life, and you cannot do that without volunteers. So thank you so much for volunteering your time. This evening, I would like to recognize these young gentlemen for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, scouting's highest honor. Their achievements stand as credit to their family, their troop, and their community. James City County has a culture which honors and supports citizens who have made significant efforts to improve the community through community service. And I believe that making a positive difference in the lives of others is the truest expression of leadership. Your service to your community already has made the world a better place, and the hard work, strong values, follow-through attitude, and compassion for others that you have displayed along this journey have prepared you for a meaningful and exemplary life. I congratulate you on your achievement and wish you continued success as one of our bright young leaders. So if you'll come up and get your certificate as I call your name, and I think that my colleagues would like to congratulate you as well. Matthew Andrews, Troop 1932. Samuel Baird, Troop 180. Daniel Giesman, Troop 103. Michael Logan Rodriguez, Troop 414. Jordan Wesley Turner, Troop 195. Mr. Hippel has your certificate. Leon Fitzgerald Wilson Jr., Troop 195. Sorry I didn't call the middle name on the first few. Apologize about that. Logan Donald Winger, Troop 180. Nathan Edward Denny, Troop 103. Did I get everybody? Hope so. Were you supposed to be called? I am so sorry. They did not. We will get that remedied. Michael Spalduff, congratulations. We have a James City... Oh, okay. I apologize. What is your name, sir?
Walter Thomas Major.
Walter Thomas Major, congratulations. You know, I know in my own community and my own neighborhood, the projects that have been done by Eagle Scouts often have such an impact, and I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way. So I would love to know more about your projects because I'm sure that they were all great. And I thank you for sticking with scouting during... Because I'm sure it's been a long road. I remember my son going in kindergarten to start talking about scouting. So I appreciate you all staying with it and being such a vital part of our community. So thank you. And we will make sure we get you a certificate. It's a good thing I have people that help me manage. Tonight's consent calendar consists of minutes adoption and zero tolerance for litter resolution and policy guidelines. Is there a motion?
Move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
With that, it brings us to public hearings. Tonight, our Planning Commission representative is the Chair, Heath Richardson. First on our agenda is the amendment to the county code, Section 3-20, Dogs Running at Large. Mr. Kinsman, you will give the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. At your April meeting, Ms. Sadler asked that I prepare an amendment to county code Section 3-20 to restrict the ability to allow dogs to run at large on property zoned A1, general agriculture, in the general vicinity of Centerville Road and the Colonial Heritage Neighborhood. In general, the county code prohibits dogs from running at large in any area of the county except those zoned A1. Even in A1 areas, if it's a platted subdivision consistent in five or more lots, of which three have occupied dwellings or manufactured home parks, they're not allowed to run at large in there. And it's important to note that running at large is defined by the Virginia Code as one that is running, roaming, or self-hunting off of the property of its owner or custodian and not under the owner or custodian's immediate control. So I prepared revision to that ordinance as requested and included a map that geographically shows those areas that would fall under the restriction. Happy to answer any questions you may have. If you desire to enact those restrictions, then I suggest that you adopt the ordinance that's attached.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time? No? Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing, and we have one card, and that is John Holland.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Holland, and I live at 6273 Centerville Road. We've had multiple different times since April of 2015 with dogs being on the loose and have been found as far as Adam's Hunt community when Animal Control picked them It's gotten to the point where we feel unsafe to enjoy being in our own yard without having to look over our shoulder, which is really kind of ridiculous in this day and age. The first time my wife and I encountered dogs on the loose was April of 15, when we were coming back home, two pit bulls were in our yard. As we drove down the driveway, not knowing who or what these dogs were capable of, we called Animal Control as they were circling our truck. After about five minutes proceeding down the driveway or staying in our truck, the dogs proceeded to walk down the driveway, headed up Centerville Road, and going actually across the road. Animal Control let us know that they had contained the dogs over in Adam's Hunt, and it was taken care of. In September of 2016, we were entertaining guests from Richmond that had come down on our patio when two pit bulls came jumping out of the woods, running towards us in our direction. Again, not knowing what these dogs were capable of, we headed inside for cover. These dogs then ran toward my neighbor's house through the woods. And how embarrassing it really was to be having my clients come down, sitting on a patio. And you can't even enjoy yourself. I mean... Then finally, what I said would happen to police and Animal Control did happen in December of 2017. Two pit bulls, as well as a rottweiler, were on the loose again in our area. A resident living in Colonial Heritage walking down her street with two small dogs was suddenly viciously attacked by these three dogs, killing one of her dogs and permanently injuring the other. In October of 2017, another pit bull was on the loose, running towards me as I was mowing my lawn. I started heading up the driveway with my lawnmower, and the dog turned around and went about his business. These are just some of the examples that have happened since April of 2015. Dogs have been on the loose at least a half a dozen times or more, where Animal Control has been called, and even a court case hearing has been held on this matter of January of It is examples like these that my two-year-old daughter does not feel safe to play in the backyard, in which I've had to take provisions of cutting down trees and soon to put up a fence, which I would hope would keep these dogs out. It's ridiculous that today we live in the 21st century and it feels like we live in the 19th or 18th century, having to duck, dive, and run for shelter in our own yards to protect ourselves. In 1970, James City County population was 17,000 people in a much more rural area and undeveloped. Today, in 2018, and still growing and developing, we are at 73,000 people within the county. Just as the land has developed and population has grown and the land has changed, these laws, I feel, need to be changed as well to make our environment a more friendly and safer place. So I plead with you guys to vote on this matter. I'm getting up there in age, and I now have children. I used to just kind of laugh at people when they said that, but it actually does make a difference when you see your child that can't just, you know, swing in a swing or be, you know, even left alone at an older age without something happening. And already dogs have been attacked and one killed. What happens when a human life is taken by something like this? So something to think about, but thank you for you guys' time.
Thank you. Any other... Okay. No other cards. I will close the public hearing and look to the Board for discussion.
Can I have a question of... Mr. Kinsman, the ordinance we have before us basically is an existing ordinance that adds in this one particular thing in 30... 30-20... 3-20A. 3-20C basically says any dog observed or captured while unlawfully running at large shall be disposed of in accordance with Sections 345 through 347. Can you just summarize basically what that says?
It's been a little while since I've done one of those court cases, Mr. Eisenhow, but generally what happens when the Animal Control Officer catches a dog that's running at large, you'll get cited for a violation of 3-20, and we go into general district court. My office will represent the Animal Control people when we're in there, and it's generally in front of Judge Killala. The first offense is generally a fine, and then the owner gets the dog back. Second offense is generally a stronger fine, and the owner gets the dog back. By the time you hit the third offense of running at large, assuming you're dealing with the same dog, we then go in after a nuisance charge. And once you have a nuisance charge, then the remedy is really within the court's discretion, and so disposal can mean quite literally euthanasia of the animal. More commonly, the animal... The owner of the animal has a different place to take it. And I don't mean this humorously. We've had chickens and ducks relocated over to Surrey. I had one dog that got relocated to West Virginia. I guess they can roam free in West Virginia. And then one, I think, was taken up to, like, Maryland. So euthanasia is pretty infrequent for running at large. But so disposal can take sort of any number of different paths from fine to relocation. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to HW-0001-2018, Busch Gardens Ireland Expansion. Savannah Potowski to give... Oh, sorry. Hi! I'm just reading right away. How are you?
I'm great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Mr. Anthony Loubier of VHB Incorporated has applied on behalf of SeaWorld Parks and Entertainment for a height limitation waiver to permit the construction of an attraction not to exceed a height of 115 feet above finished grade or 155 feet above sea level. The Busch Gardens Williamsburg site is located at 7851 Pocahontas Trail, is zoned M1, limited business industrial, and is designated limited industry on the adopted comprehensive plan. A height waiver is required because the proposed structure exceeds the 60-foot height limitation imposed by the M1 zoning district. Based on the height simulation provided by the applicant and the attraction's interior location within Busch Gardens, staff does not anticipate that the attraction will be visible from surrounding developments or roadways. Staff has reviewed this application and finds it to be consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the site limitation waiver subject to the conditions included in the resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is present tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
So what's the ride? No. I know better.
All right. I will open the public hearing. We have only one card, and that's from the applicant if you would like to ask any questions. Otherwise, we have no other cards this time. How are you?
Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Laurie Giles. Here representing Busch Gardens, and appreciate everything we work with staff on and really to answer any questions you might have.
Is this an enclosed facility, Ms. Giles, or open?
We aren't ready to talk too much about it, obviously, as Mr. McGlinnan knows from many years of doing this. But anything in particular that relates to the height waiver that is of concern, we'd be happy to talk about.
He's just taking intel back to Mr. Onisook, apparently. So...
He already knows.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
I'll be happy to move the resolution unless there's any discussion that anybody would like to engage in first. We're approving the height waiver.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Mr. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to ZO-0003-2017 and SO-0001-2017, zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance amendments for streetscapes. Scott White is to give our staff presentation. Hello. And go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. At the November 1st, 2017, Policy Committee meeting, staff discussed the need to prepare a draft ordinance revision to require street trees within all major subdivisions, and staff modeled the new ordinance after York County's subdivision ordinance. At the December 14th, 2017, Policy Committee meeting, staff presented both draft subdivision and zoning ordinance amendments to the committee to review, and the committee voted 2 to 0 to move the proposal onto the full Planning Commission. At the February 7th, 2018, Planning Commission meeting, the amendments were recommended to be considered by the Board by a vote of 5 to 0, and the Board indicated as concurrent with this approach at the February 27th, 2018 work session. Staff has provided you with three draft ordinance proposals for the following ordinance sections. Subdivision Ordinance Section 19-27, preliminary plans' middle requirements, was amended to require landscape plan as one of the middle requirements. Subdivision Ordinance Section 19-73.1, street trees is a newly created section that lists the new standards and specifications for street trees in major subdivisions. Zoning Ordinance Section 24-102, street trees is also a newly created section of the zoning ordinance that listed standards and specifications for street trees and developments that contain multifamily dwellings and/or apartments. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors... Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this ordinance revision and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Questions for staff? With that, we'll open the public here and well, I guess we'll hear from Mr. Richardson first. Thank you.
Nothing really to add beyond our review, our 5 to 0 vote back in February. Very good change and I think very good insertion of fresh language. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any speaker cards? No. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing and I'll look to the board.
Move the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you.
Ordinance.
Right, Mr. Porter?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion care.
Thank you. That brings us to ZO 0004 dash 2018 and SO dash 0004 dash 2018, zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance amendments to delete references to fees which are set forth in the county code Appendix A dash Fee Schedule for Development Related Permits and ordinance to amend and reordain JCC Code Chapter 4 Building Regulations and ordinance to amend and reordain JCC Code Chapter 8 Erosion and Sediment Control. Paul Holt.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So yeah, that title might be longer than the staff presentation tonight. As mentioned, on May the 8th, the Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance that created Appendix A to the county code. The appendix consolidated fee references for development-related permits and the effective date of that ordinance is July 1, which is concurrent with the new fiscal year. To ensure the county code does not have duplicative or erroneous references, the fee references now listed in Appendix A must be removed from the various individual chapters in the code prior to July 1. The set of ordinances that's included in your agenda packets tonight removes those fee references from Chapter 4, which are the county code dealing with building regulations, Chapter 8, which is erosion and sediment control, Chapter 19 subdivisions, and Chapter 24, the zoning ordinance. The ordinances represent formatting changes only at this point and do not contain any other substantive changes. Staff recommends the board approve the ordinances contained in your agenda packets and on June the 6th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the changes to Chapters 19 and 24 by a vote of 6 to 0 and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Basically just housekeeping.
Correct.
All right. With that, we will ask Chair Heath Richardson to come forward from the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, members of the board, nothing further to add. We did go over this case last week and a vote of 7 to 0 recommended approval.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. With that, we will open the public hearing. Are there any speaker cards? All right, seeing none, we will close and I will look to the board.
Madam Chair, just, just to clarify from our last motion, there were, there were more than one ordinances being adopted at that, by that vote.
Correct.
It will be the same case here.
This one as well, yes.
Four, four ordinances sent down.
Your motion?
I'll, I'll move the adoption of the four ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion care.
Thank you. With that, that brings us to Building E lease termination. Mr. Porters to give our staff presentation?
The JCSA leased the land from the county for Building E and for a number of years, used Building E, they've now moved that on Tuning Road, and for a number of years, the county has been leasing the office space within Building E, both the county and the service authority, wish to terminate that lease and would like to do so on June 30th. And there's a resolution attached for the termination of that lease and both the county and JCSA will have to act on that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Porter? All right, with that, we will open the public hearing. We do have a speaker and that is Chris Henderson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. Haven't seen you this year, been a little busy. Again, I'm just astounded by the lack of civic engagement that we, that we have here. You would think that more people would be here participating in the government. You folks represent us and so it is important that citizens be engaged in that process today as an election day, so I want to encourage people to go out and vote while the polls are still open. With that, I have a couple of questions with regard to the arrangement between the county and JCSA and perhaps the county administrator could answer those questions if appropriate. And that was regarding the payment of any rent by the county to JCSA or was this just an inter-party agreement that had no monetary consideration? And if so, was there a fiscal impact to the county or to JCSA either way?
The county did lease.
So the county paid rent to JCSA, which was effectively a reimbursement of its rent that it paid?
Yes. It's been, been for a number of years.
Okay.
And the county owned the land, so the county leased the land to JCSA.
And JCSA built the building, is that?
Yes.
Okay, so they own the improvements. All right. And so as a result of the termination of the lease, does the, do the improvements convey to the county or are they still owned by JCSA?
The improvements come to the county.
They'll be taken care of in the JCSA meeting. Okay, so effectively then?
Madam Chair, could I just ask that we utilize the normal procedure here?
Instead of going back and forth?
Mr. Henderson can make a statement including any questions and then after that?
Okay.
Be appropriate to answer questions if?
If you all could get back to Mr. Henderson with his, the questions, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, you know, I.
I'm talking about after, after public, the comments are over, then there would be an opportunity?
Instead of a back and forth?
For answers to those questions rather than doing this during the presentation. We don't do this for any other.
You're right. Yes, thank you for.
Well, it helps, just, it helps to clarify then my, my line of questioning and statements with regards to the disposition of the, of the lease agreement, seeing that it was an asset that was owned by JCSA, which is again, paid for and underwritten by user fees and the taxpayers of Jame City County. So there is a right pocket, left pocket discussion that should have been held and I think it's appropriate that it's disclosed that there's an asset that is being transferred as a part of the lease termination. So that way there is an enhancement to the Jame City County asset ledger as a result of its procurement of those improvements under the lease. But I have no issue, they don't, no longer use the property and so I think it makes sense for the county to continue to own it. And so again, I think it's important that citizens engage in the process and I think part of the issue is the, the timing of these meetings and the format. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Are there further speaker cards or any other speaker cards? With that, I will close the public hearing and I will look to the board.
I just ask if the county administrator has any comments to make in regard to the questions that were raised beyond what he's already provided.
No, so I think I hopefully answered these questions.
Else? All right. With that, is there a motion?
Move the resolution authorizing the termination of the lease agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion care.
Thank you. With that, I move to board considerations.
We don't have any board request and directives.
Oh, I'm sorry, board request and directives. Apologize.
Well, let me start really quickly. May and June are always very busy months, so I'll try to do this as quickly as I can. Wanted to pay recognition to the folks who put together the Memorial Day service out at the Williamsburg National Cemetery. Always a very inspiring and patriotic event and this year was no exception. Appreciate our first responders being involved in that process along with our veterans organizations. Secondly, we had Grove Neighborhood Block Party and somebody had the very good sense to say there was a possibility of rain and so moved it indoors. It was about 95 degrees that day. Everybody had a great time in the gym with inflatables and excellent food and I got to see our firefighters demonstrating their skill at Jenga. Unbelievably skilled. That evening, a Community Action Agency gala took place at Ford's Colony and was a very successful and enjoyable event, including a, an auction of various items that had been donated. On June 2nd, I was able to participate in Clean the Bay Day along with Mr. Eisenhower and Mr. Pollster from the Planning Commission. I would tell you that I was very positively impressed with Mr. Eisenhower's eyesight as he spotted a baby deer, a little fawn that was in a briar patch about two feet from me and as still as could be, trying to avoid detection. That was the good news. The bad news was I came home with three ticks and I'm currently taking antibiotics. The NAACP that same day, after a quick shower, was able to attend the scholarship ceremony in which a number of community organizations acknowledged the winners of their scholarships to graduating seniors at various high schools in the community. And I appreciate the hospitality of New Zion Baptist Church for that event. And along with, well, no, not this year, I also attended the GED graduation ceremony earlier this week and it had a large number of graduates, a very enthusiastic crowd of family and friends and it was a great way to recognize that accomplishment. And I just wanted to say that in all of this and in many other ways, I've just continued to appreciate the great work that staff has done, whether it's Parks and Rec and putting together that, that block party, the work of our recycling group and, and the Clean County Commission, our folks who met with me this morning in Pellics Point to deal with issues related to stormwater management and our folks in zoning who are trying to take care of some piles of trash that have been deposited on the roadside as a result of some unfortunate evictions in, in one of our neighborhoods. That in every way that I can see, our staff are behaving incredibly professionally with a great deal of compassion and a great deal of innovation and enthusiasm. So I just want to say thanks very much for all that. I was very privileged to be asked to step in for Governor Northam at an event in Norfolk back on the 14th of May. It was a Virginia Housing Development Authority's 20th anniversary of their program where they work in partnership with the US military to provide homebuyer education classes for service members. And it was really nice to be in a room with a lot of military, of our military who have benefited from such a tremendous program that we have in a cooperative effort in the community. Had a couple of meetings, one with Chairman Larson and Porter out at Settlement at Pellet Creek back on May the 15th where we were dealing with some issues in that one. And then on the June the 7th, Mr. Hippel and I managed to go over and hold a town hall meeting in Ford's Colony and I think we both sort of escaped with minor wounds, so it was a pretty good meeting. I really enjoyed it. I was very pleased to be offered the chance to come back and attend the Police Awards Banquet. That's a tremendous event in our community and I'm very proud of the job that our police do there. Got to go speak to the military retirees during Military Retirement Appreciation Day on Fort Eustis. It's getting to be pretty bad and they're, most of them are retirees and you're younger than I am. The other thing is did one radio interview, essentially it was back May 23rd, where we were talking about some of the things that had been going on with our budget and the state budget, school liaison committee. Besides that was Clean the Bay Day and I only got one tick.
I've had no ticks this year. It's been a busy few weeks and I did attend a Community Action Agency training session as being one of their new upcoming Board of Directors members. This week I will be attending the next EDA meeting. We attended, several of us, I believe Ms. Larson and myself, attended along with a great number of staff, Mr. Porter and a lot of us were there. The Business Appreciation Event at Revolution Golf is very well-attended. It celebrated businesses in the historic Triangle area. And also attended the Police Awards banquet and it was a privilege and honor to be there and recognize our, our finest and congratulations to them for a job well done. And I'm sure the list is much longer, but I will yield to Mr. Hippel.
All right, I'll just let everybody know our code and compliance people are working like crazy, as all of our staff is, but they're trying to bring in some new online permitting and they put in a lot of hours. I've gone to several classes with them, 11, 12 hours a day. On Saturday they were in as well, working. In fact, they were even able to send me a bill on Saturday, so I was much appreciative of that. But yeah, they're doing an outstanding job over there in code and compliance, trying to make it so that, you know, when you go in there and you look for a permit or you need a permit or you need a fence, you need anything, you can go online, get what you need, check things out and move forward. So once again, it's keeping the county open and transparent and it's a good way for anybody to be able to sit at your house and go through permitting process and all that and never have to come down to the county if they don't want to. Of course, the chair and I are going to go to, if I can convince her, she says she would, HRTAC and Harumfa and, next Thursday, so we'll get to go down there and have some fun together. Paul can't make it with us this time, but appreciate him going all the time, but, so the chair and I will go down there and take care of that. Thank you, ma'am.
There you go. Thank you. First Supervisor McGlinnan, let me apologize, you are right, we do not have a back and forth during public comment time or any time, but it is helpful at the end of those, if you're able to answer the questions, I do appreciate that. Did want to follow up on, I appreciate everybody going to so many things because there was a conflict the night of the GED graduation was the Business Appreciation. There's a lot of conflict, so it really helps that we can all help cover one another. And wanted to mention school liaison. We had a very informative school liaison. In fact, we did not get to all of our agenda because we talked about the role of the school resource officers. And we had both a representative from Jame City County and from the city of Williamsburg and it was most informative and of course they, they do a lot of things that, that we don't want to, that they don't want to talk about publicly, which I totally understand, but just know that they take it extremely seriously and are working very hard to do everything they can do to keep our schools as, as safe as possible. And so I appreciate all the information that they provided. I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting, I have a WADMAC meeting next week. I also attended the Celebration of Lifelong Learning for the Literacy for Life, which was always very moving and very important in our community. So I went to Jamestown Jams and we have another one coming up and that's on Thursday?
21st.
The 21st, which is a whole day of play that, oh, okay, you're going to talk about that, so I won't, okay. But it's a whole thing with our rec department, so I hope people will come out and, and take advantage of that and then we will get back on the Friday schedule in July and August of the Delorean, so I urge people to come out. I walked around with the neighborhood and many people from the state and local about a beaver issue in, off the Capitol Trail and learned more about beavers than I ever knew and I urge, so there is, was a, there had been some activity to knock down the beaver homes, but that led to a wetland turning into a dryland and so before you take matters into your own hands, I strongly urge you to reach, you can reach out to me if you're in my district and I can, and help get you with our staff who will gladly talk with you and then get you with the Commonwealth, with wildlife, they will talk with you and, and there are some measures if, if you're seeing some, some damage and we can help you work through that, but not always whacking their homes is the best measure, but I, because I know those little rascals can be. But I, because I know those little rascals can be aggravating, I understand, but they do serve a purpose. So I would appreciate it if we could possibly have the treasurer come to our work session. We have received numerous calls regarding business license and some mailings and then some penalties. And I realize that we are not able to do anything about those penalties, but if we can talk about what the process is, how we might do better moving forward, I would really appreciate it. If nobody's okay with that.
Absolutely.
And then just to close out, if I could just take a moment of personal privilege, like I did last year, and really appreciate Ms. Hunley coming, an outstanding kindergarten teacher. This Saturday, many of us will be attending graduation for Williamsburg James City County Public Schools. I have had a child, I will not match Mr. Hippel, but I have had a child in Williamsburg James City County Schools since the fall of 1996. So I am ending quite a tenure there. And I just want to take a moment to thank them for an outstanding education and thank them also for the economic development role that they play for this county. And I am certain that I will stay involved in the schools, but just appreciate everything that they have done. And especially, my youngest daughter told me a couple months ago, did I have any idea how much cereal she has eaten because of all the meetings I have been to while she's been alive? And I don't think she knows anything different because I ran for office, I believe in 2005, which is when she started kindergarten. And so she's right, she's eaten a lot of cereal. But Abby, I really appreciate that and I'm glad that you are, you're going off to a school that has a meal plan. And hopefully you will not have to eat too many more bowls of cereal, just a couple more mugs, but anyway. So with that, we move to the reports of the county administrator and then we will have, we will go into our JCSA meeting and then we'll have our closed session. Mr. Porter.
You have my report in your file, in your package, if you have any questions. Be glad to try to answer them. I just want to point out that there'd be a closure on Jolly Pond Road beginning to June 18th through, from 7:00 PM till June 20th. The closure is located where you see the end of state maintenance sign. That section of the Jolly Pond located near the Jolly Pond Dam. It's being done for road repairs and to improve the condition of the roadway surface. There will be no private or commercial entrances that are located within the closed area. The actual closure will encompass about 1,000 feet of the county-owned roadway over Jolly Pond Dam. And it may last longer depending on the weather conditions. Inclement weather could happen. If you have any questions, please call 757-259-1443. Second thing is the Jamestown Jams. It's unusual, it'll be on a Thursday, the 21st, the longest day of the year. It'll feature the originals out of Creative Collective. Come enjoy the free music on the 21st. It'll be performed at the Jamestown Jams at the Jamestown Beach Event Park. The originals will highlight four local songwriters during the Jamestown Jam. The entrance of the concert will be open at 5:30 and will take place on the grassy field there at Jamestown Beach Event Park. Of course, admission is free and parking is behind the old Jamestown Campground Building that's at 2205 Jamestown Road, adjacent to, across the road from the Jamestown Settlement. If you have any questions, please give us a call. That, last, when you, Board completes its business, it adjourns to 4:00 PM on June the 26th for a work session.
Thank you. I have had some people who have talked to me about the times of the concert ending and, but I had, I've found out from staff that because that is the beach, there's access to the beach, we don't want to stay past that time due to lighting. And so, but we, I've heard people and, you know, as we work, as we get this more, as we move on in this path, we can certainly look at some other things moving forward. But I have heard, especially, they seem to be very, these concerts seem to be growing in popularity, so, and we will have additional food trucks, I believe, moving forward. All right. With that, I will pass the gavel.
Thank you. I call to order this regular meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Mr. Powell, good evening.
Good evening.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhow.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here. Next on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any speaker cards this evening? With that, we will move to our consent calendar, which includes the minutes of adoption, May 8th, 2018, regular meeting. Is there a motion or does anyone?
Move to it.
Move to approve.
Consent calendar.
Are we doing a voice?
Voice votes, fine.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That carries. Next, we will have a public hearing. Amendment, termination of lease between James City County and the James City Service Authority for Building E. Mr. Powell, do you have a presentation?
Just briefly, earlier tonight, the Board of Supervisors approved lease termination. In order to finalize the transaction, the Board of Directors also needs to take action. So if you wish to finalize the action, there's a resolution in your packet for your approval.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Powell? Nope, then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards for that? Nope, then we will close that public hearing.
We'll make a motion.
Motion? No? Motion to approve the resolution?
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye. Next is board considerations. First, park property acquisition, Ironbound Water Storage Facility fencing. Mr. Powell.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the Service Authority CIP includes funding for fencing for several of our water production facilities. One of the facilities to be fenced is the water storage facility on Ironbound Road. In an effort to be able to fence that facility and place the fence in the optimal location, we need to acquire a small strip of property from VDOT. That's the strip that is denoted in yellow on the map. It's, VDOT has agreed, is willing to sell the property to us. They've established a fair market value of $2,500. Staff concurs that that is fair value for that small parcel and recommends approval of the resolution in your packet to authorize the purchase of that property for $2,500. And I guess I would just note further, the fence will just be the square or maybe it's more like a rectangle. It will be close to the storage facilities. And then there's an existing chain link fence that runs a little bit further down Ironbound Road. We will tie into that and make it all consistent with architectural decorative black fencing. The fencing will not go, you know, parallel to Monticello Road, it will just go parallel to Ironbound and then, and then around the facility.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Powell, any discussion?
Move the approval of the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Powell.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye. Next, contract award, water meter replacement. Mr. Powell.
The Service Authority CIP includes $3,050,000 to accelerate the replacement of approximately 15,000 water meter registers over the next two years, at which time all of the meters in the JCSA system would be radio read. As discussed previously and during the budget process, the radio read meters are more accurate. They also can be read faster, which would then allow for shorter billing cycles into the future. The resolution before you tonight authorizes the award of the contract for the registers to Core &amp; Main as a sole source contract. Core &amp; Main is the sole distributor in our geographical area of the Neptune registers that have been used by the Service Authority for approximately 30 years. The standardization promotes more efficient reading and billing as staff can rely on previous experience and training. Under the contract, the Service Authority will pay $170 per register. And while the resolution does not include a specific dollar amount due to the uncertainty of exactly how many registers will be replaced, we anticipate the cost will be somewhere over $2.5 million. JCSA will still need to award a contract for the installation of the meters and I anticipate bringing forward a resolution for that contract award at your next meeting. Staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the contract award to Core &amp; Main for the replacement water meter registers. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or discussion? No, look for a motion.
No, but I should probably make a statement here. My son works for Core &amp; Main.
Oh, okay.
We have not discussed this in any way, but just to be on the safe side, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay.
Mr. Powell.
I move the resolution to authorize, approach.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Abstain.
And Ms. Sadler.
Aye. Next, we have the appointment of the JCSA CEO, Mr. Kinsman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At a recent meeting of the Board of Directors, you asked me to bring back a resolution to you in an employment agreement that would make Mr. Powell the CEO of the JCSA. I tried to set forth some of the history of the JCSA in your memo as briefly as I could. Basically, the JCSA is operated under the General Manager from day-to-day operations, but the final say in any JCSA matter since, best I can find, the 1970s, has rested with the county administrator. If you choose to make Mr. Powell the CEO and General Manager, the attached resolution makes it very clear that General Manager and CEO terms are synonymous, so that way we don't have to go back and clean up a whole lot of references. It also makes it very clear that Mr. Powell would be the final arbiter of any employment issues. And then also included in there is an employment agreement that mirrors basically the compensation package that Mr. Powell gets right now. It would effectively make Mr. Powell an employee of the Board of Directors rather than an employee of the county administrator. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or discussion? I am looking for a.
So moved, a motion.
Thank you. And who will, is this a roll call vote?
You'll have to do your own roll call.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye. With that, we're looking towards boards, requests and directives. Anybody have anything?
Nope.
We're all good. General Manager's update.
Only item I have, which I think you all are aware of, but the long-awaited replacement well at our Five Forks Water Treatment Facility is online, has been online for about a couple weeks now. So very happy to have that in place and want to thank you for your support in that, in that project. That's all I have.
Very good. That's excellent. Good news. Well, with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on July 10th, 2018 for our regular meeting.
So move.
That's voice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you so much for everything you do.
We appreciate you. Go home.
With that, if I could, we will be going into closed session for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice, in particular, the county's contract with Springstead Waters Executive Recruitment pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia. Two, consideration of a personnel matter, the discussion of prospective candidates for employment, in particular, the county administrator pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Three, consideration of a personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Appointments Historical Commission, Appointments Stormwater Program Advisory Committee, Appointments Williamsburg Area Arts Commission, Appointments Economic Development Authority, Appointments Colonial Group Home Commission, Appointments Peninsula Alcohol Safety Action Program, Appointments to the Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Directors. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Thank you. With that, oh, go ahead.
Ms. Sadler.
Oh, sorry.
All right.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. We will now go into closed session. Okay. We are back from closed session. If I could have a certification for that?
About those items we indicated we would speak about in closed session?
Thank you. Mr. Porter.
A roll call vote for it.
Yes.
Ms. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will adjourn until 4:00 PM on June 26th, 2018 for the work session. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, Mr. Porter.
Ms. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will adjourn until 4:00 PM on June 26th, 2018 for the work session. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, Mr. Porter.
Ms. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we will adjourn until 4:00 PM on June 26th, 2018 for the work session. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, Mr. Porter.
Ms. Eisenhow.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Motion. You are adjourned.
Thank you.